Good evening. We would like to start. Call to order, Tuesday, January 22nd. Richmond School Board Meeting to order. All call. Will the board members or present please respond? Ms. Barlow?
Here.
Ms. Gibson?
Here.
Mr. Young?
Here.
Ms. Cosby?
Here.
Ms. Burke?
Here.
Ms. Owen?
Here.
Dr. Sapien? Ms. Lohr?
Here.
And Ms. Page?
Here.
We have the board manager. The next item is Mr. Carlos Mendoza.
Anybody that needs an interpreter today, please let us know. Thank you.
Thank you. And before we continue with the agenda, I would like to apologize to the members and the audience for starting the meeting and not starting the meeting on time. So again, we apologize. Next item?
The next item is item 1.02, Pledge of Allegiance. Follow by a moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we see this? Also, we'd like to recognize we just joined by our school representative, Ms. Deja. Thank you again for joining us this evening. And directly thank you also to the join by Dr. Sapien.
The next item is 1.03. On the adoption of your agenda, I have one item to change, and that is to remove item 8.03. Receive from action a resolution adopting Richmond Public Schools for re-need retirement plan and restatement documents.
Your motion? Second, it's been moved by Ms. Warren and seconded by Ms. Burke to approve the agenda as amended. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Seeing that we have none, the agenda has been amended as presented. Next item?
The next item is 1.04. Approve the minutes of December 3rd, 2018, December 19th, 2018, and January 7th, 2019 minutes. The only corrections I received, Mrs. Gibson wanted something added to the December 19th meeting, and I believe she was going to speak with Ms. Bedestock.
Ms. Gibson?
I would also like to make a motion regarding another change to the agenda.
Ms. Gibson, we have approved the agenda as amended.
We were able to amend the agenda at any time during the meeting.
But we have presented those amended items at the beginning of the meeting. Is it with the board? If not, we will move on with the agenda as amended.
Ms. Chairman, Madam Chair, I'd also like to note that I, while we were talking about the agenda, I had my hand out.
Well, I apologize if you did not see.
So I motion to amend the agenda to move up the budget piece earlier in the meeting because I believe there might be some folks who specifically want to hear that portion and also to add an agenda item to continue the conversation that we had in our last meeting regarding group governance.
So... Do you want to need a second?
I have a second.
It's been moved by Ms. Gibson and seconded by Ms. Young to move the budget discussion at the beginning of the agenda and to discuss upcoming school board governance. Any discussion? Ms. Burke?
Thank you, Madam Chair, for clarity. 5.02 on the agenda, discuss upcoming school board governance training. That's not, that cannot be a part of that position?
Yes, that's the purpose of that item being on the agenda, to discuss the upcoming school board governance training.
So we have a motion on the floor to address that, but it's already here?
Right. It's already on the agenda to discuss next steps. Ms. Lohr?
Would Ms. Gibson be open to, I think what we're trying, what I'm hearing is that under the board governance training, there's room to talk about governance, accountability, and transparency in that section. Would you be open to making sure that we, we'll make sure that we use that as part of the discussion under that line item, but then just keeping the agenda as is, but moving? Your motion then would just be to move the finance portion further?
Yeah, that's fine. I wasn't clear on what the updates were that were part of that particular line item. So I amend, I amend the agenda to include moving the budget piece to the upcoming our agenda.
Okay. And that is the purpose of that section 5.02, is that upcoming school board governance training. And that item is being included. So, Ms. Burke? The motion is to move the budget.
The motion has been amended by Ms. Gibson to move the budget discussion up on the agenda. Mr. Young, are you still seconding that motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Important question?
Motion's made by Ms. Gibson. The motion's made by Ms. Gibson and seconded by Mr. Young to move the budget discussion up on the agenda. Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Dr. Sapien?
Yes.
Ms. Lohr?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
The gentleman has been amended. So the budget item will come after public information. It will now be item four.
Next item?
The next, the minutes. You need to approve your minutes, and I don't know if you want to pull out December 19th until Ms. Gibson can say an opportunity to get the changes on the December 19th minutes that she has requested. You can approve December 3rd and January 7th.
So, Ms. Gibson, is there no question? The change, some clarity? Need some clarity to the change you have for the minutes on the 19th? Would you share that?
Sure. The minutes on the 19th did not include the detail on the such a quick conversation that we had at the end of that meeting. I had asked several questions at the end, and I would just like to confirm those questions to have them included in the meeting for the next.
Okay. I think it would be helpful for the boards to understand what are the questions, to make sure all information is included in the minutes, to make sure that the minutes are on.
Yeah.
So until we get that clarity with the minutes on December 19th, we can pull out December 3rd and 7th. So we made a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the minutes from December 3rd to January 7th.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Barlow and seconded by Ms. Gibson to approve the minutes for December 3rd and January 7th. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Seeing that we have none, the minutes have been approved for December 3rd and January 7th. Next item?
The next item is item 2, recognition.
You're up. With the 7th district, we're done with this. We just wanted to present this certificate to Deja Baller, senior at Armstrong Senior High School, for her service as the school board representative for the month of January 2019. We are so grateful to Deja for her presence on the board and her thoughtful insights. I'm also grateful to her for serving on my student advisory council, and she has agreed to emcee the State of the Schools speech in February. So she's got a lot going on. And she just told me, you want to share a few words about?
I just, I had a call today at school, and they told me that I got accepted into Regent University. And I got $76,000 in scholarship for Mary Baldwin. And $96,000 in scholarship for Bridgewater.
Well, we are just incredibly proud of you and know that you're going to do amazing things next year and beyond, and we're so grateful for your time on the board. Would anybody else like to share a few words?
We have parents, principal, any family support.
Because we all know it's ATC Village.
It's ATC Village, that's right.
Yes.
I'm just so delighted. 7th district just continues to show up and show out. Great things are happening in the East End of the city of Richmond. Congratulations to this lovely young lady and her beautiful mother.
By the way, it works in the talent office.
Excellent, excellent, excellent. First of all, you know what, I'm about to get on behind those second row. And you are, oh, remember. Thank you.
Everybody get in there. All right.
Somebody's shy.
One big.
There's somebody else in the back?
Yes.
Come on up. This is wonderful.
His grandmother was also a rich public school. Mr. Harris? His grandmother was a much traveled rich public school teacher. So this is the rich public school 7th district.
The second item we have for recognition is a proclamation for Principal Appreciation Week. I will read that proclamation. Whereas, school principals work cooperatively to direct, develop, and inspire all members of the school staff and student body to communicate effectively with parents to engage them in the learning process. And whereas, principals serve as educational leaders responsible for managing the policies, regulations, and procedures necessary to ensure a safe and effective learning environment for all students in Virginia's public and private schools. And whereas, principals and teachers are entrusted with the opportunity and the responsibility of guiding, directing, nurturing, mentoring, and imparting knowledge to our children while they are at school. And whereas, principals must work collaboratively with teachers, staff, students, parents, and the community at large to proactively prepare students to be self-reliant and productive citizens. Whereas, Virginia's School of Principal Appreciation Week is an opportunity to recognize the hard work of Virginia's School of Principals and to recognize the importance of principals in ensuring that every child has access to a quality education. Now, therefore, I, Ralph, as Northland, do hereby recognize January 20th to 26th, 2019, as Virginia's School of Principal Appreciation Week in our Commonwealth of Virginia, and I call this observance to the attention of all our citizens. Therefore, be it proclaimed further, the school board and the city of the city of Richmond joins Governor Northland in recognizing January 20th to 26th, 2019, as Virginia's School of Principal Appreciation Week in the Commonwealth of Virginia, and encourages all schools and community members to join in this recognition.
You need a motion?
Madam Chair, it's removed.
It's been moved by Mr. Young and seconded by Ms. Young to approve the proclamation. The school principals. Appreciation week. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing that we have none, we approve the proclamation for school principals and staff. Just principals recognizing during the week of January 20th to 26th.
For the record, we appreciate all.
Next item?
The next item is 2.03. Receive a presentation from the Richmond Symphony.
Madam Chair, good evening. I'm the president of the school board. I'm David Fisk, with the Richmond Symphony's executive director. And joining me here are Amy Calvert, who's our director of education and community engagement. And I know you know Kristi Jo Adams, a founder of special for Richmond Public Schools, but she's also a very traded member of Richmond Symphony family. One of the wonderful products of our youth orchestra program. Some years ago. And still looking after one of our youth orchestras that is practicing every week in Dr. Martin Junior Middle School. So we thank her very much now and always for all the work that you do for Richmond Public Schools. And a quick moment of context for you. The presentation which I'm making here, the presentation for what you're doing, is part of this shared goal that we have with the superintendent of the board to ensure that every child who's in Richmond Public Schools has the chance to learn a musical instrument. We believe, and I know you know too, that access to music is an integral part of well-rounded education. And we really appreciate the commitment over the years that you're showing now in ensuring that music is taught at an elementary school level up, which makes Richmond Public Schools a leader in the national education and ensuring that elementary school level is where it starts. We'd love to make a pre-cake ultimately, but let's be grateful for where we are at the moment. We also understand that amid all the luxury pressures you have, finding that precious resource to keep supplying instruments is really hard. But there are others who are here to show up, burn with you. And Richmond Symphony feels very fortunate that since 2015, we have had a big tent, which is both metaphorically we're trying to do, but also a natural big tent. A mobile stage that would take around the city of Richmond, put in public parks, work with each community to create a community festival with the goal of leaving lasting good behind. It's been to the East End a couple of times in studio back there in June. It's been to Bryan Park, it's been to Jacksonburg, and it will by 2020 have made its way around all nine districts. And we believe that it's now possible to ensure that we will have bought instruments for every elementary, middle, and arguably high school as well by 2020. It's not the symphonies money. We're just a way of bringing it all together. And just want to acknowledge some of those who made it possible, the community members in each case, as well as Kristi Jo, with her great help from Suzanne Marie Parker and the team of Turnaround Arts and the three schools where that works in the city. The superintendent and staff that you lead. And the city of Richmond itself that has given us funding to be able to take a big tent around. And some major private funders, including Von Secor and Weinstein Properties. Von Secor especially has been instrumental in making sure that we can do the good that we're trying to do here. Richmond Public Schools Education Foundation and the Richmond Foundation have been key partners with us here and active fiscal agents for the application of proceeds in the way that donors have intended. And Amy has been leading this program for us from the start, and it's thanks to her and the staff who've been able to do what we're able to do with big tent festivals. And this dedication Symphony has to ensuring that every child has access to music. Since 2015, the big tent festivals have generated proceeds of $273,500, that has all gone to Richmond Public Schools Education Foundation and has been used to buy instruments for all the schools that we've touched so far. Including all the schools of the 7th, 8th, and 9th districts and the 6th district for the middle school. What I've got here tonight is a check for $18,000 that is specifically for the 3rd district elementary schools. We love and we should benefit from it as well. They sometimes get overlooked. And we all make sure of what the case. We've also been working with others in the East End, and an additional $58,000 were generated from the big tent, not from the East End Festival last year, which we didn't take the lead, we could just follow the participants. So that's a total of over $331,000 over the last three years. As I said, it's not the symphonies money, we're just passing it over. Sometimes it's hard for us because we are raising money ourselves. But if Ms. Gibson would like to come down, and I don't know if the chair would like to come down, but if also Ms. Cosm would like to come down too, then here is the check for elementary schools and the 3rd and 6th district. We are proud of you. And please give one more round of applause to Kristi Jo Adams.
Mr. Fisk, before you leave, just like to openly thank you again for all that you have done and for all that you will continue to do for our students and Richmond Public Schools. We greatly appreciate your support.
You're welcome.
If I know me, to unite this core. Thank you so much. Next item?
Next item is 3, public information. I don't have anyone who signed up in advance to speak. This is your manager.
So if we have members in the audience that would like to come forward at this time, please do so. If you're speaking as an individual, you have 3 minutes. If you're speaking on behalf of the organization, you have 5 minutes. Again, if you would like to speak at this time, please come forward now and state your name and sign in. Mr. Hernandez, allow me to have 5 minutes.
My name is Baya Luis Torres. I'm here on behalf of my children who go to attend green elementary schools. I'm here to speak because of the benefits that we have received by having more bilingual personnel. So now we feel more amiable to go to the school and speak to the personnel there, our problems, our concerns, and we feel like it's changed for the day. And I would like to see more schools equipped with these tougher provisions. I still have kids in other schools, for example, in Bushell and Somerville, D.C., and I would like those kind of persons, bilingual persons in those schools, not just in green. No.
Thank you. Gracias.
Mr. Hernandez, when you can, I can you please use the mic so we can hear?
Sure. My name is Socorro, my name is Socorro Garcia. And I'm here to speak on behalf of my children because I have four children in school. So I have one child in Green, one child in Bushell, and one in Georgewith. And the other one in Thomas Jefferson, my daughter. And I would like to have more personnel with my label because when I go to the schools, I don't understand that well the teachers. And then sometimes if I have to go to say something about my child, like he's going to be late or something like that, then it's hard for me to communicate what exactly I want to do if I don't get them to understand me. And that's why I'm requesting that please hire more bilingual personnel so that they can understand us when we come to them with our concerns. Thank you very much.
Gracias.
Good evening, board. Happy New Year. I have seen you since the New Year. Couple of things. First, I would like to, to cover you with prayer. That's just who I am, best brother, daughter, and nephew. So that's what I want to do. To welcome before you as humble as we can and say thank you for each one of these board members and their staff. We covered them and their families and brother Jesus. I would pray to God that this year they will have one of the best years possible. She was saying a prayer. Secondly.
Mr. Jones, excuse me.
I'm sorry.
Please state your name.
David Jones, David Jones from the Jones Foundation. Secondly, I saw it last week, and it was very alarming to me that you can look at, you can look it up if you want, on alternate rep.
if you look it up if you want, on ultimategroup.com, and I know you have a lot going on also for building schools and budgets and all, so this one may have stood by most of you, but it's for, the BHL will be holding one of this tomorrow, which will be Wednesday. And then the article that says you got to give with your A.D.s as much as you can if you propose this. What they're planning on holding on is from August 2nd to May 31st will be a dead period. No coaches, nobody can do anything with their kids. Literally. So, and if you're used to coaching and used to doing it, you might have a dead period, maybe a week or two out of your month. So it's understandable that you don't want to get every day going, but literally, you can read the article, it states from August 2nd to May 31st will be a dead period. And it said, if you want, if you don't want this to happen, you should get with your A.D.s and all. So I spoke and I emailed every A.D. athlete, every principal athlete. So if you think about it, a lot of these kids have nothing to do after school. If you take the coaching from them, you take the after-school activities from being prepared, from being practiced, it's going to destroy, it's going to destroy the sports in Richmond Public Schools. So I haven't spoken with Dr. Randy, I pray you will, Superintendent Adams, that this cannot happen. If this happens, we are literally, our sports in the city probably will be nothing. Most people, if you're a great athlete, they're going to take you to a private school. If you're a partial athlete, you're probably just going to lose. We're already in a bad place, of course, basketball, football, and other sports. If you take this from them, literally, we can't prepare. You have June, July to prepare for a team that you need to be ready and all this. So, like I said, I'm coming to you as humble as I can and say this to you. I don't know who needs to speak with who, I don't know what has to happen, but this cannot happen. If this happens, we are totally destroying the sports and athletics in Richmond Public Schools. And it's an article that says this is a two-eight requested this, and the only two-eight programs in the city is Thomas Jefferson, John Montra, everybody else is a three or four. So this came from here. So somebody, somebody has to speak up for these kids. I've lost one last week, I've got one in critical condition that needs to be in MCV because football season hasn't started for a bit, but so what do you do? You hang around in the neighborhood and make bad choices. So for me as a coach, for me as a man, ah, this is tough. So I'm asking, whatever you can do as a board, I know it may not be, but any phone calls, any emails you can make tonight, the first thing I want to get this to stop, would be greatly appreciated. At the end of this, we want to benefit not just the students, but us. So yeah, I'd like to re-sign my resignation.
Thank you.
Chairman of the Board, I am the Chairwoman. I had a question, a clarification on a document later on the agenda, but I don't know if I need to do that, if I can do that now, or if you're going to have questions for when you get to the item. So this is a question.
Can you state your name first, and then we can have the cabinet members?
Steve Wilborn, my name is Steve Wilborn.
To give you some clarity. And again, what's the item again?
It's the policy five, six, three, GPA class rank, and honor roll. And then on the back, it's the questions about the selection of valedictorian or salutatorian. There were two comments, one on each of those sections that seemed to conflict with it, and I didn't understand.
Yes, Mr. Wilborn, so did you make your comments now pertaining to those two items?
Thank you. So my, my, I guess my question or comment is that on the front of the page, down near the bottom, it says pupils transfer during the junior senior year shall receive a GPA and a standing as to the percentage rank. And that, to me, seems to conflict with on the back where it says to be eligible for valedictorian or salutatorian, pupil must complete the last four semester, consecutive semesters prior to graduation in the high school for which year she will be graduating. So although on the front, a student could conceivably complete the last four semesters at the school, if they transfer in, they're going to receive a percentage rank and not a numerical rank. So to me, that seems to conflict, the two statements seem to conflict with each other. And it was just a clarification that I'm asking.
Thank you. So we can't respond to you, but superintendent, cabinet members, can you help you in some way clarify any questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. This concludes our public information area. Next item.
The next item will be the term of assignment for budget four point two, one receiving superintendent's estimate of means.
This evening I have a presentation geared to outline the administration's overall thinking regarding the FY20 budget. It is not intended to be a complete budget with each of the line items, but rather in effort to make sure that the board has the opportunity to weigh in both on the process that we will have over the next few weeks, as well as the general direction. And so I welcome and we would appreciate the board's feedback to help navigate this process as we move forward. We did? Great. Thank you. In, in approaching the budget this year, I wanted to outline a few key principles to guide our work. They are outlined on, on slide two. As you can see, the first was putting our financial house in order. And as it states here, I believe that we need to demonstrate to the public that we are being good stewards of our money as we advocate for more. And I want to be absolutely clear, I 100% believe that we need a significant increase in funding. But as we do that, I want to make sure the public has faith and confidence that the money that we have, we are using well. And that means taking a hard look at all of the programs and positions that we have. And if something is not directly serving our core mission of teaching and learning, to take a hard look at it and to save where we can save. I believe it also means that where, as we did last year, we have used one-time funds for some recurring expenses, that we collectively take responsibility for that and ensure that we're able to continue to support those things that we believe should continue. Second, I want us to hold schools harmless. I believe our schools need more, not less. It's why we have been marching, will continue to march, and why we will continue to advocate here both locally and at the state level. Unfortunately, when we are faced with shortages though, that means that cuts need to be shouldered by the central office. And I want to be clear that central office is a group of individuals who work very, very hard on behalf of schools. That being said, my first part is always going to be schools, and so while, of course, I am discussing some cuts this evening, I don't want that to be misinterpreted as a lack of competence in many folks doing great, great work, but rather the reality that our core work is about kids and teachers and what happens in the classroom. And so that will always be the most important thing from my perspective. And then last, as we advocate for more money, I think it's incredibly important that we focus that efficacy around the things that we as a collective community said were important to us, as enshrined in dreams for RPS, our strategic plan. So after 170 odd meetings and thousands of participants, I think we have an incredibly exciting and ambitious strategic plan that if we implement it, I fundamentally believe will provide the kind of education that we want for all of our kids. And so I want us to make sure we're doing everything we possibly can to fund that plan from both local and state sources. So it was with those three principles that I framed the thinking for the FY20 budget. Let me briefly go through the rest, and then I would love, of course, to hear the board's thinking. On slide three, we have an overview of our budget from last year, our budget from FY18, and then a sort of hypothetical if our appropriation from the city was flat for this coming year. So let me walk folks through this a little bit. The first line you'll see there is reflecting the prior year fund balance that carries over into the next year if re-appropriated. As this board discussed in great detail last year, we had a re-appropriation of $12,470,800 last year. As a refresher on some of the things that we use that money for, a number of bilingual NESL positions, and we heard a need for more of that tonight, but also it sounds like at Green Elementary, it's beginning to make a difference. We also, of course, put money towards a 2% increase for teachers, and we wore the full cost of that. Hopefully, there will be an additional increase coming this year with support from the state. And we did a number of other things, for example, setting aside money for teacher supplies, which we did through the Amazon cards, which I think was very positively received by our teaching force. The fund balance from last year that will hopefully be re-appropriated for this budget cycle is significantly less, $417,008. That is a significant driver of the difference in the revenue that we are going to be facing for next year. And so you'll see in the next line, the 156,675, if we assume that that continues to be flat, with some minor fluctuations from the state. You can see that we are, in essence, facing $12 million in unfunded projects and personnel as compared to last year. Now, we certainly don't need to do all of the things that we did last year, but the salient point here is to continue business as we were doing it last year would cost us another $12 million, which we don't have at this point. And so as a result of that, turning to slide four, you take that into account and our desire to budget for the first time for a teacher's step increase. So not just the raise, but the step increase as well, which is in essence a cost of living adjustment year over year, something which this board discussed in great detail earlier, last year. That would be in the ballpark of $2 million. And so the total amount we would need just to sort of maintain operations as is and do the teacher's step increase is approximately $14 million. And so given the need to be as efficient as we possibly can and to address that potential deficit, offering $13 million in cuts from the central office, given that second principle, and a million dollars reserved from vacancy savings to cover the $14 million for that projected deficit and the cost of the teacher's step. I want to also note that some of the proposed cuts from the central office, which of course we can and will get into much greater detail in our upcoming work sessions, are designed not only to meet the deficit, but also to help us operate more efficiently. So maybe I've often heard me talk about AS400, which is our HR and budget system. This was launched by IBM in 1988. As a result of its, in essence, being on life support, it requires multiple positions to help us do all the necessary manual things we need to do to keep the system functioning. And so as we make these cuts, one of the things that we are trying to do is to figure out, how can we make small investments, for example, in a new software platform that will ultimately allow us to save money by shrinking the number of individuals sometimes needed to maintain legacy systems and processes. I want to be clear, this is no commentary on these individuals' contributions, but merely the reality that with modern systems and, and software, we may be able to be much more efficient with the limited dollars that we have. And so we are trying to look for places like that to secure those efficiencies and provide better service for our teachers, our families, our staff, and ultimately our children. If I go to slide five, I think it's important that we, per principle one, put our financial house in order, as it were, but I also think it's important that we advocate rigorously for additional funding, not only from the state, but also from the city. Per principle three, for basically two things. Number one, to fund our strategic plan. I'm incredibly proud of the plan because it is the community's plan. When I read it, I get excited, and I'm excited that people have started to memorize 1.2 and 3.8 and all of these things, because I want it to live in our communities and I believe in it. But it isn't cheap, and I will not be shy about talking about what it's going to cost to bring it to fruition. We shared an initial costing of the plan several weeks ago, and year two, which will be this coming budget cycle, so the 1920s year, will cost roughly $14 million. The number here is a little bit shy of that because one of the pieces in the plan was the teacher's step, but we pulled that out because it was so significant and put it on the earlier part and trying to capture some cuts and some vacancy savings to take care of them. Of course, we can spend time in upcoming work sessions digging more deeply into what's behind each of these priorities and what the money is for. I'm excited to do that, because I think there's a lot of great things in here. For example, going forward from some of the pilots we've done, from some of the curricular opportunities this year that are generating a lot of the site, making sure that we are providing kids with rigorous, complete curricula, not just books, but a full set of materials, lessons, and manipulatives in priority one, and so many other things that I look forward to discussing over the next several weeks. In addition, if you look on slide six, I think it's important that we strongly advocate with the city to make sure that it provides the local match to state-provided benefits. So as we're out there advocating for more funding from the state, often what the state does is they say, we got you, here's a little bit extra money, as long as the locality kicks in its piece of the ship. So I am grateful to Governor Northam for proposing a 5% raise for teachers, which is up from the 3% that he proposed in an act of last year. But I need the public to understand that Richmond is going to have to kick in about half of the cost of that. The state money is only the state portion. And so there's a cost to accepting money from the state. Ballpark, it's about $4.7 million for us next year to accept the 5% raise and match it. And so it is And so it is the locality's responsibility to provide that match, and so I believe we should strongly advocate to receive that funding from the city as well. So if you go to Slide seven, you'll see there Table five shows a quick summary of how we get things right-sized to basically get us back to even, and then the request of the city, $16,460,000 targeted towards the strategic plan and the match of the teacher raise. And so that, I believe, is what we're going to have to organize around and make sure there's support for as we continue to keep the pressure on the assembly. And I think it's also critical that we continue to talk with our local elected representatives here in Richmond to make sure that we can raise pay for our teachers and other staff. By the way, I want to note, though, the governor's proposal has often been talked about as a teacher raise, and in fact, we go to just about everybody in the school division, so that's an important thing that would affect a lot of people. And we have to fund the strategic plan. I don't want the plan to be this nice shiny thing that sits on a shelf and collects dust. I want it to be reality for our kids. Reality costs, and so we're going to need to advocate to make sure that we get that funded. The last slide just lays out proposed use of our time together. We have a work session scheduled for the 24th. The proposal there is that we could go deep on the budgets for the superintendent on the board, chief of staff, the engagement office, the talent office, potentially folding off on the schools office, given the number of offices we have there. On the 31st, I believe we would entertain a proposal to shift that date since that is the mayor's stated city address. I know elected representatives would like to be in attendance, I have heard, and I believe it would be important to have the administration there as well. So essentially looking at another date, but with the goal of diving deep in the academic office. On February 4th, we have another board meeting, which can serve as our required public hearing on the budget, even though all of these sessions are, of course, public, where I think it would be important to hear from the public and internalize that feedback. February 7th, then, a deep dive on the operations office. February 12th, reserved for other issues that have bubbled up with the course of this process. And then we need to approve a budget to submit to the city by February 19th, so that would be the key goal of that meeting. I do want to note that, given the proposed breadth of cuts to the central office, about half would be contracts and things, not positions, and about half would be positions. And so that discussion of positions, we would need to do it closed. So I also wanted to share, given that it would be readily identifiable, I think, and so I also wanted to get the board's guidance on how to structure our work sessions such that we're able to have those conversations, but also be respectful of the public who are going to drive out at night to be a part of these sessions. I don't want them to come and then we go and it closes, and they sit there and can't hear. So I welcome the board's advice and thinking about how to address that. With that, I will pause. I would love to hear reflections and guidance from the board. Again, on one, the general direction; two, the schedule and how we use our time; and three, the kinds of information that the board would like to see so that I can make sure that I am providing the right level of detail and being responsive to your questions as we go through this process. Let me finally just say, reductions are never easy. In fact, they are always painful. And I have a great deal of empathy for all of the people who work in the central office and appreciate the work that they do every day. And my proposal does not come lightly. It is with a heavy heart that I put this forward, but ultimately, I think this proposal is what is necessary for RPS to be on the path to achieving the goals that we have set forth in Dreams for RPS. And so I just want to say to everyone in the central office, thank you for your service, and I look forward to beginning the discussion with the board.
Ms. Yell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm ecstatic for the opportunity to rein in central office funding in favor of investing more in the classroom. And candidly, for a really long time, school board after school board, along with superintendents, have claimed to run a tight ship and denied that we were top-heavy, but some of us have done better. And the Council of Great City Schools audit revealed some of our waste, and so I look forward to championing the opportunity to reappropriate those pressures in favor of the classroom, and I'm excited for the opportunity for this school board and superintendent to do something very unlike RPS.
Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'm heartbroken because, you know, there's just, there's so much confusion as it pertains to the budget. Last year, there were news articles and headlines praising the city for fully funding the schools. And now this year, there's a shortfall. When we create this much confusion, particularly in this era where we're trying to get more funding, it hurts. You know, I was concerned when we chose early on to raise the salaries of the highest-paid folks that we have working in the district, because it makes people ask the question, how can you march for more? I was concerned when we, when some of us were applauding unsubstantiated, this like unsubstantiated windfall that of, what, $600 million from the closed Coliseum project? Because again, it makes people question why we're marching for more. And now this $13 million close cut sends this message that we've been sitting on waste. And I think that too causes folks to question the need to march for more. And so I think that it's really imperative that we're cautious as we make these decisions. I think, I mean, I'm incredibly sympathetic to the folks that are in central office who, you know, I've been in companies that are looking at layoffs and it's a really difficult time. It doesn't help productivity, doesn't help morale, it's hard. You don't know what's going to happen, and it's scary, and I'm sympathetic for that. And, you know, I'm especially sympathetic because as Mr. Kamras had pointed out, you know, this shortfall, this new headline that we created, is our own doing because of the approach that we took to the budget process last year. And more recently, we increased the shortfall even more by adding a few more positions to the roster as part of the budget transfer discussion. So here we are, you know, talking about cuts and also talking about marching for more, and then also talking about funding these huge things, and my hope is that we are incredibly sensitive throughout this process. So I think that first and foremost, what I would like to see is we're looking at the budget process, that it looks like the focus of our time is on the cuts. And right now, we are, you know, we're tasked with identifying our needs. And so, you know, it's worth noting, there's nothing holding us back from making the ask of, what, $26 million at this point. We have until February to identify what our needs are. We have until sometime in May to finalize what that final budget is based on the funding that we get. And so, you know, we have approved a strategic plan. We did approve that strategic plan without any numbers associated with them. I would like to see more focus in the weeks to come on the specifics of that plan, because if there are going to be folks that are going to be let go, I want to make sure that there is, you know, incredible fidelity to all of those asks that we want to make. And I do think that in terms of priority, that's the priority, is what are the needs? And if there are some trade-offs that we need to make once we've gotten our budget numbers in place, I think that can be done, you know, sometime thereafter. There's no rush to make these cuts right now. Thank you.
Ms. Malo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I certainly don't mean this as a slight to my colleague, but when I see Jonathan Young get that excited about a budget, of course, it gives me a little bit of pause. And frankly, when I first looked at this document, it too, we are talking about some potentially pretty significant cuts with this budget. You know, I know that any $300 million a year organization is going to have some addressable efficiencies, and I look forward to digging into those. I think it's going to be very important that we do take the time, particularly this year, now that the administration has had a chance to settle in a little bit, to figure out how we can operate more smoothly in some ways. Certainly, certainly the technology can be a piece. Certainly, I hope that if we do have to make significant cuts with regard to staff members, that we are doing what we can to help with those transitions. I think that would be very important. And I do think it's really important that, as Ms. Gibson has noted, it is tough to ask for more when we did, to some degree, put ourselves in this position. But last year, we didn't get any additional recurring revenue. The year before wasn't much better. There's been a, you know, I appreciate the investment in the schools through the meal stacks and building new facilities. I think that's very important. But I really hope that people on the city side don't think that's enough, and I really hope that people in the community don't think that's enough, because we have year-over-year expenditures that are extremely important to our school system. We owe it to members of our staff to pay them fair salaries. We owe it to our students throughout the city, particularly those who speak other languages, to make sure that they have the language support they need to be able to communicate with administrators at their schools and to be able to communicate with their teachers. So I don't regret supporting those items. But I think we said last year that it's really tough to make a decision, which most of us recognize was not an ideal budgeting practice, but was morally necessitated by what is going down, going on in our school system. And when you hear about families in certain parts of our city who just simply aren't receiving the support and cannot communicate with people at their schools, that's important to address, and I'm glad that we did. And I had a large public debate last year with a certain council person about this issue. So I understand that we, why we have what I think is being referred to at this point as a projected deficit, and I know it's important for us to address that. I certainly would love to see the city to, the city help us out. I'd love to see the state help us out. I hope that people will be marching on the 28th to get more support from the state, but I certainly hope that we're not letting council and the mayor off the hook either, because we can say, as Ms. Gibson alluded to, that there's a Coliseum project that may end up spinning off enough money for us to build more schools, or we can take a look at a facilities plan that actually has no verifiable commitment to investing in our schools, merely a potential roadmap for how our schools could be funding, could be funded in the future. But that's not good enough, and we can't let the public get confused about the state of funding of our school system. I do struggle with the idea that there's just so much waste, and we've been so frivolous as a school system in the past, and we can just cut to the bone and call it a day, because I don't think that's the case. I do think that there are people in our central office, there are people in our schools who work very hard and do a spectacular job for our school division, and I would prefer not to have to let any of them go. But at the same time, with the way funding's been going over the past few years, I have a hard time seeing a $30 million commitment being given to us from the city. I certainly like that. So with that in mind, I am prepared to take a closer look at these numbers. I, I'm sure that there will be efficiencies to be had. I don't know if $13 million is a number that I'm going to be comfortable with. I certainly think we need to look at these, look at these, make these decisions very carefully, and we need to be using a scalpel rather than gnats when talking about cuts. But this is going to be a very hard process, and I'd appreciate our allies in the community to put just as much pressure on the city as we are on the state.
Ms. Burke?
Thank you, Madam Chair. When receiving this information on board docs, I've had the opportunity to work with many persons over the years, and my first thought was, I'm confused to be, who are we talking about? What person? We need everyone. However, in the eighties, we had to go through the change, changes, nineties, now, right there again, the change has to come. What I'm looking forward to, the superintendent has given us an outline, as requested and as expected, of course, with state guidelines. And we have time to hear from our constituency. I look forward to hearing, I know there are a lot of programs on the table that repeat each other, and we do need to look at that in some form. We talked about that last year when putting the budget in place. So my fingers are crossed that there'll be more programs and projects to do without that personnel. But with the same token to whatever decision we make, it must be in the thought of addressing every child's needs. Until our children have ample technology, until our children are in schools that are up to date, until our schools then put away those workbooks and have opportunities to move around and be actively engaged, until we meet those needs, we as public servants have not done what we've been called or charged to do. I don't want to see anyone do that dish of a job. I cannot imagine. However, my fingers are crossed again, maybe there'll be jobs within schools as we increase, hopefully, the opportunity there. So we're giving people, not giving them, but further governor raises, which is great. However, I look forward to going through this entire process and not jumping the gun, stating that this is just a hole in whatever, because it's happened, this, I can go back years back, it's always been a battle, it's always been a struggle. And Richmond isn't the only school that's going through changes when it comes down to writing a budget. I mean, that's just what it is. I don't like to do a budget at home. You know, think about it. Exactly. But it is what it is, but we just need to be mindful that for all 24,000 students, the East End should have what, the West End, the West End should have what, North Side, the inequity piece, all of that needs to be addressed. And we can't keep doing business as usual. At some point, there has to be a change. A change has to come. A change has to come. But most importantly... But most important, and I'll be sincere with this, in the end, my thought is, have I made the decision in regards to every child, the haves and the have-nots? Because it's not about us, it's about our children.
Ms. Cosby.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too, once looking at this document, had to take a deep breath. I said it before and I'll say it again, thirteen million, we've gone through those types of, I'm going to use the word for calling it, cuts. And we went through it not too long ago, two thousand eight, two thousand nine. And we made significant, the district made significant cuts, because there were, there was no money at the state, there was no money at the city level, just nothing. And I think we can learn a lesson from that exercise. And of course, when you talk about central office, people automatically think, yes, where there's bloat, yes, there's waste, there's central office. But I caution this board to be, to be very prudent and to do our due diligence, because as we move forward, as we address the VDOE, MOU, as we address our strategic plan, and we think about our needs, but also we want to make sure we don't handicap addressing our needs, nor do we handicap addressing our opportunities, and opportunity for growth and innovation. So to meet the needs and to meet, and to look forward and where we want to go. And so, as we look at cuts when it comes to human talent, I think it's very important just to keep that in mind, if we do without a function or without a position, will that handicap us as we move forward and as we look to address the needs of our students and of every child? But not just the needs right now, but what the needs will be in the future and where we want to go, and our opportunities. I think that's very critical. And to me, the cuts in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, that was a lesson learned too. It's not just, you know, you cut to the bone, and then again, you still offer the services. You cut programs, but are you giving yourself enough bandwidth to transform? So I just, I do want us to be very cautious about that as we look forward. I do think that, yes, we should definitely explore efficiencies, and if we can repurpose But I do want us to be careful when we're thinking about central office, and I do have to echo what my colleague has said in terms of being bold enough to ask for our needs. This plan is, it is, our strategic plan is a community-driven plan, and it is aspirational. And I think it's great, because it's clearly is a roadmap to move us forward, and yes, it will take dollars. And we have to be able to say, this is the direction we want to go in, and this is our priority as a city, as we title it, not just the board, but officials and staff, et cetera. So I think it is incumbent on us to definitely articulate our needs in order to move this district forward. So that's just my thought. Second, you asked about process and information needed. So my, in terms of process, my first thought was, I like the, having a blunt public hearing. There is time with this calendar, if we can just look at this between two twelve and two nineteen, if there could be another opportunity for a public hearing, so that we could, if there's a public hearing early on, I can get some final thoughts, have another public hearing, to get feedback from the community and see if there have to be any additional adjustments. So that's one, in terms of process. But second, in terms of information, I am going to be asking for a lot more information, but some of the information that just comes to mind as we think about central office, and I will be asking about needs and specific things with the strategic plan, but I did want to get an idea of, and I'm talking positions and programs, what new programs have we developed or created since last January, this time last year, as well as new positions that we've brought on board since this time last year? And also, as we look at the totality of central office, just what are the salaries and compensation for, I want to know about human talent, but also when we talk about programs, the key big-ticket programs, I would like to get into for our next budget session. So the salary and compensation, so, and some key big-ticket programmatic things, of the specifics that I can think of right now. Thank you.
Dr. Sapien.
Thank you. Well, I look at my colleague, Jonathan Young, his big statement, I can understand it, but not to be too hasty, I think it's invaluable to know what you're cutting. You know, you want to cut your notes especially. Yes, you have to look at the thing that working, that don't, to make a more, better decision when you know what it is. At this time, we're experiencing the highest, or the longest shutdown, and you see, you really get to see what and who is being affected. It just surprises me, the number of people that are affected, and they don't work together. So just to re-put it even more basically, when you either own your own business, or you have a home, and things happen, and you have to kind of tighten your belt, as you said, yes, it's challenging, you have to figure out what am I going to do? But your decision is based on the greater good, and while many of us have experienced it, you rarely have an opportunity to go back. So what I mean by that is, like Scott said, you don't cut down to the bone. Thirteen million is a lot. And so, what everyone has been saying, that people program is still a lot. So I will reserve my thoughts and comments, like you see in here more. And so, I would like, if you could, kind of break it down by department in that nature, just so you can see the clear picture. I appreciate that, thank you.
Ms. Dorr.
So I disagree with my colleague, Ms. Burke. I love budgets, and I feel like we have not actually created a budget on this board, ever. What we have done is we've taken what we spent last year, we said, we definitely need all of that, plus a lot more. And I absolutely agree with the sentiments of the group in regards to being bold about asking for what we need. I've always felt a little weird asking for a needs-based budget when we haven't done any work in analyzing what's going on on the underlying budget that we just assume that we need every year. So I'm really looking forward to digging into the details here, and I think it's really important, and I think in order to effectively advocate for the need, whether it be fourteen or thirty or fifty or a hundred, we actually do our diligence, so I'm excited that we're actually going to get into that this year. In terms of your requests, I feel like we need a common set of definitions, so we, what is central office? Bellwether has one definition, Council on Great City Schools has a second definition, we might all have our other definitions. I think we need a baseline understanding of what we mean when we say central office. Two, we've gotten into some confusion as a board about salary or salary plus benefits. I would suggest that we talk about people in terms of salary, not salary plus benefits. Three, I would like a process for understanding what is in phase one of the strategic plan line by line, and an opportunity for those of us on the board to have our authorship around that. So what do we, what in the strategic plan, plan do we maybe put, we need to pull forward into phase one, or, you know, push out, it's not as important? So I think we all probably have our idea of what the priority should be to fund first, and I'd like a process for analyzing, or have, be able to have our authorship around that.
Ms. Burke.
I'm glad we have Ms. Dorr on the board, since she loves budgets, but on the, it's something that we have to do. We are without the thirteen million dollars, that's a given, and I'm glad Ms. Cosby reckles two thousand eight, two thousand nine, because I think we never recovered from that, as a, as a school system, it's been challenging ever since. But I do hope that we don't give up. Dr. Sapien just made a great point. When people are without jobs, it affects not just those persons, but persons around them as well. And that's something the city and state need to consider also. So we know we're without thirteen million dollars, and the city's in a position to find money from someplace. We have to, we can't sit on the sidelines continuously and expect others to make decisions for us. We have to march, we have to be active. So once we have, we are working on it. I also think it's just staying, we may need to extend this calendar, because a lot of information will be needed, and it sounds like we're really, which is great, we really want to go in depth to the bones to identify what needs to be done, what does work, and there are programs that are sitting out there that haven't been touched or are not effective. We know, we know that, we know that. So I'm thinking that it does need to be extended with more work sessions, and that we do it right, because we're going to do this for our children, as I stated earlier, and that we also remind people, I read the general summary notes every day from Dr. Harris, and it's heartbreaking how a lot of things that we've asked, it's not working, it's not working. It's, it's one, it doesn't make sense. One party against the other party, it's ridiculous. But in the end, it's about children. So we have to remind people on that cold day in January twenty eighth, we all need to be out there and bring other folk with us. And as Jennifer McLennan stated, Senator McLennan stated that, it has to be ongoing, you just can't do this while we're in session. It has to be ongoing, we can't rest on our laurels. So I look forward to doing the homework, and however, we must be realistic, this, I don't think we're going to be finished this by December, excuse me, February nineteenth, if we're going to do this right. What is the deadline date? I know May is the final one, but what is the deadline date in terms of getting it to the next level?
That's actually the deadline date to get into the city.
But they don't give it back to us.
Yeah, that's true. In which case, we will then grapple with whatever the final number is. But it sounds, one of the things I'm taking away is, we need at least another work session, and so I think we should figure out that date very quickly and get that on the calendar to make sure that we have the time to dig into these things to the depth that I know everybody would like to, as would I.
Ms. Gibson.
Thank you. I have just a couple of comments and then a question. So one note I think is important to recognize is, we need to transform our school system. And so, I appreciate the, you know, we want to do both things. I also think that one of the reasons why we need to do these both things is because one of the biggest issues that our school system has is that it's suffering from continuing backlash. There is so much change, whether it be teachers turnover, staff turnover, changes that happen at general assembly every year, we have new leadership on board, and with that, there are new processes and things that happen. Now we have additional changes that come from the, from the, from the understanding. So I think that if we made a decision like this, I need to be, in some sense, to be bold and to be cautious in concluding, as I'm making these decisions. I also wanted to note, and I think it's important, especially for the fact that, you know, this is a setup, very sensitive to having, you know, that, the advocate information, is that the idea that the way you think system has been handled for us, can you do for a very long time, and I'm so thankful that, thank you for the work of the advocates, that we know that, that we can have a student, that it doesn't decide that. And so, and that's not just something that I'm saying in my desk, that's been, that's been proven. So I'm sure, mentioning the family board, Dr. Dunn, under sixteen, that noted that compared to, because the system is, you know, state, that our central office was smaller. And then, and then we're sending one of our students to the school support, compared with the study part of the school stuff, that they include, as central office was larger. So, and so I would be disappointed if I didn't, that we're not, you know, in the, in the current central office that has, has not been grown. And so, what, you know, the question I have for, in the following, is, is what, what percentage, and, and central office, anything that can be tried, with this, looking, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, that's, I would like to, you're sure that for, in that session, to that, to that, to that session, ask everyone to send to, 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 to that position. That's what I'm saying.
Mr. Malo. Big pleasure. I did want to have a little chat process as well, thanks. I'm glad you, that you, that you, that you, I wanted, wanted to make sure that public has, like, to be aware, and, 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 process, so that we could be, like, we had, public information, and, 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 I also wanted to talk about the closed versus open, and discussion, I think, that it's really important for us to, to be very careful in how we're discussing our decisions, that of course, it's very important for us to be open and clear to the public while discussing, I think, changes of this, my events, but at the same time, what we need, a person identifiable, if you're talking about little positions or small departments or things like that, is something that we have to take into account. So just want to remind everyone to be very careful with how these, the type of things are discussed with, with the public, and, and, as we discuss these, as we, as we. So, with that, one thought that I had, I wanted to run this topic with, so, for example, Thursday, we're scheduled to look at the budget for a number of the smaller offices, so it has to be respectful of the public, it might make sense for us to have a public discussion of all the non-personal potential cuts, for all of those offices, rather than the, non-personal, then personnel, non-personal, and just go clean out and close, and then we can go to close to talk about some of that personnel, does that make sense?
Yeah, let me just briefly, I mean, you may have seen, Samuel leaned over to Scott a moment ago, and emphasis of that regard, this, this conversation, because I am more mindful of being respectful, I'm all
Make sure that our schools get what they need. And no one will ever be able to say again about RPS that there's too much money floating around. So I am excited to continue the advocacy at the state level. I've had the fortune of being over at the Assembly a number of times already. I work for Matthew now and Shadé. They tell me where to be. Though we haven't been as successful as we'd like so far, we will continue the fight. It's important that we continue this fight, as a number of you said, not just during session, but after session, in November when elections come up. We need to hold people accountable at the state level, also at the local level, to make sure that we are able to turn dreams for RPS into a reality for each and every one of our kids in every part of the city. And that is what I hope we can do together. Thank you.
Ms. Gibson?
I just had a couple of thoughts. Thank you for the recap. For our next meeting, it would be helpful to see the breakdown of the fund balance. It is a bit of a, again, one of the messages that we only have $400,000 in our fund balance. That's the proposal. But our board will determine, you know, how we're going to spend the fund balance as part of the decision that we make. And so, you know, so before we say that the fund balance is $400,000, let's weigh that decision and look at the various things to confirm what we're going to be carrying over into next year or not. So I think that that breakdown would be helpful to see at our next meeting. And then I also wanted to note that capital budget is also part of this process. It was a part of that presentation, but we should make sure that that does not fall off of our radar, because that's obviously a critical component of this process.
Thank you for raising the capital budget. That will certainly be added as well. On the fund balance, I did just want to note, this board last budget season enacted a policy that would, I believe I'm saying this correctly, would carve out, what's that? Right, totally right. It's 25% for maintenance and repairs. And then the remaining 75%, I think 25% of that was to go to pay down the legacy teacher retirement system. Assuming I have my numbers right, that means really there's only 50% of that amount available for other purposes, which of course we're going to have to discuss. So just want to make sure and recall after our discussion.
Dr. Sepin, Ms. Bur.
Excuse me if I missed anything. They gave you a recap, but did yours make you break me down by your department?
Yes. Yes, I got it. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you. I just want to hear from our student representative, because we, that's why she's here. We wanted to hear from our, by the persons of whom we work. We work for the students. So we can't speak for all of them, but your position as well, or insight.
I don't, I don't have anything to say about that, but I do have to say about something from, like, in the classroom. And I have a question. My question is, seeing that the government has shut down, I heard that come April, if it hasn't rebooted or anything, it'll kind of defer us from graduate adventure.
No.
Okay, good.
You're graduating. You're going to have to, like, lay down on the steps of the Capitol. You're graduating.
Yeah. And with the classrooms, a lot of, a lot of us be complaining because it's so cold. We cannot learn in a cold environment. It is very hard, because a lot of us sleep in the cold. A lot of us sleeps in the cold. And I would just like for something to get fixed, because I know my mind doesn't function in the cold.
Nor do ours. To Ms. Gibson's point, we will also talk about, we have two kinds of budgets. One is called operating, which is like teachers and books and stuff. The other is called capital, which is buildings and things like heaters and air conditioners. So we will talk about that as well, to make sure that we are advocating, to make sure we have the money, to make sure that it is warm in the winter and cool in the spring and the fall and the summer. No leaks, no molds, no broken tiles, none of that, because without that, it is very difficult to operate.
Yeah. And I think that's it. I don't have something else to come on. Don't come back.
Well, you know, you know where I am. Anytime you have a question.
I think that's it.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
And do you need to get home now, or are you good for a little bit more?
Later.
Ten more minutes, sorry.
And also, just a reminder for board members, if there's some confusion about budgeting process, just refer to Policy 3-2.1 if you need to refresh your memory. The Policy 3-2.1, which talks about the annual operation budget. Just giving you some clarity. Next, next item.
And this is item five, your legislative update. Class point 01, receive a legislative update. Good evening. Chair Lemon Page, Superintendent Cameris and board members. As you know from our daily legislative updates, thank you, Board Member Perk, for mentioning that, that the legislative session is well underway. And the Office of Engagement Team has been extremely busy at work representing the interests of RPS. Superintendent Cameris, as he's mentioned, has already testified twice to the House Appropriations Committee and the Senate Finance Committee. And we are continuing to monitor legislative action daily. We've also had two trainings, because we know our families and our community, they are already advocates, but we need to give them the tools to be able to navigate the system, and we are doing just that, and we will continue to do that. Our board-approved legislative agenda and respective advocacy efforts have been extremely focused on state funding, but we are concurrently following other legislation that would positively or negatively impact RPS. And Matthew, our Director of Advocacy and Outreach, has been working very closely with the Richmond Legislative Delegation, and we are grateful to each member for their efforts. Now, in addition to your daily updates, we are, we will soon distribute a community update that provides a general overview of the beginning of the session and all the legislation that we are currently and actively tracking. We also encourage and welcome your engagement in the legislative process over the coming weeks, and we know that your support and advocacy will be critical to our success. Now, I'm going to turn it over to Matthew to provide some additional updates.
Good evening, Chair Lemon Page, Superintendent Cameris, board members. Thank you for the opportunity to tell you a bit about our legislative efforts so far this session. The General Assembly has been meeting for about two weeks now, and they have been actively assessing, or we have been actively assessing bills, monitoring committee meetings, meeting legislators, and especially working with partner organizations that are aligned with our priorities. This year, we witnessed this course of public education funding intensive buy. I have not seen this level of engagement on the issue in the years that I've been lobbying down the General Assembly. And legislators from around the state, from both parties, are discussing deficiency in state aid to localities. However, several legislative and political and policy issues are still looming large over this session, and those will have to be resolved until we know what type of impacts this session will have on RPS. Before the General Assembly can negotiate any of the public education funding issues, the Governor, Senate, and House must still resolve how are they going to handle the impacts of the federal tax cut act from last year. There's a $1.2 billion projected rainfall of new state revenue, but much of that hinges on what the General Assembly decides to do as far as tax relief and tax related. In the coming weeks, they have to decide how to do that. And currently, the House Public and Subject Fair, the Governor's proposals, which we've talked about in terms of his education funding proposals, but they have deemed that his entire proposal regarding spending for this final year of the Biden to be dead on arrival, I quote. There are a number of budget proposals that we are advocating for and hoping that as the General Assembly decides on those revenue and taxing issues, that we hope that the education funding issues will prevail. Our General Assembly delegation has introduced over 20 budget amendments for us in the House and the Senate. They cover topics like increasing the adverse add-on. The Governor, as you know, included a proposal for that. We have advocated for increasing that further. There's some proposals regarding the reduction and elimination of the Support Position Act, which has been in place since 2009. If you follow that at all, that is about a $400 million impact to your two localities, and we are looking forward to the General Assembly taking some action to roll that back. There are many different adjustments to different support staff ratios, providing more school counselors, more school psychologists, more school social workers, more school nurses, increased funding for teacher incentive programs, and we've actually tried to be a bit creative with those and tie our status as a division in MOU, the Board of Education, to providing some additional direct incentives to teachers that want to teach in RPS. We are asking for great flexibility in how we utilize our EPI slots, including one of the provisions within the strategic plan regarding a three-year-old pilot program. We're advocating for allowing us to use our unused EPI slots to enroll three-year-olds, and also including some other divisions like fee-based access for higher-income families that will help provide for diversity in our early education classrooms. We are also paying attention very closely to the literary fund and the lottery funds and how those are used right now. The state is using a lot of those funds to pay for teacher VRS contributions, which formerly were paid for with general funds. And the more that those can be paid for with general funds, the more lottery funds are available for our discretionary uses. The Governor has also proposed a 2% salary increase in addition to the 3%, which was already in the FY '20 budget. This week, the House Appropriations Committee received a briefing on that proposal, where they discussed the significant local impacts required due to the matching nature of those funds. And while no decisions have yet been reached on these proposals, legislators are very tuned in to the different proposals out there that do or do not require matching funds. I've heard several different legislators use the word flexibility, which would indicate that they are possibly more inclined providing funding in different pots that allow some bit more discretion in how we use those mites. We are also following a number of legislative proposals, not, some also that may carry financial impacts in the future, some may not. I would note that this morning Senators Stanley, Sturdivan, and Marston announced proposals to approve a statewide voter referendum. The exact question that they are proposing to ask all voters in particular is whether the General Assembly shall issue state general obligation bonds in the amount of $3 billion for the purpose of K-12 school building, construction, repair, or other capital projects related to the modernization of school facilities. If they do approve this, it would cause the General Assembly to form a new school modernization commission that would assess the status of school facilities and then be able to award grants that would require some matching local funds and/or private investment. They're thinking that this could provide a total appropriation of about $5 billion once you combine those other funds. And I would also note that the presentation that the House Education Committee received yesterday noted a couple of interesting statistics. 70% of Virginians currently think that funding for public schools in Virginia is not enough to meet their needs. And 63% of Virginians say that they are willing to pay higher taxes for school funding increases. There are several other proposals related to school modernization. We're close to following all of them, but I do consider that the most significant. If it is approved, it would be one of the, it would be the largest commitment to public education this state has seen in decades. A little bit more.
Oh. So, keep going.
A few other highlights. Delia Born had a bill that dealt with student discipline and preventing students from being charged criminally with disorderly conduct. Unfortunately, that bill was killed yesterday in the House Courts of Justice Committee. I know several of you were following that closely. Senator McCollum's bill is still under consideration. There have also been bills that deal with early childhood education, aligning those, the functions for early childhood education over to the Department of Education. Currently, they're all under Social Services. That would be a multi-year effort of implementation as far as integrating what's happening locally to pair with what's on at the state level. School safety has been another big topic. Heard a lot about school counselors this year. The General Assembly is considering that, that issue of lowering the ratio of school counselors. That's also being paired with a proposal to require that school counselors spend 80% of their time on direct student services. We know that school counselors perform a variety of functions, and Delia Landis, the sponsor of that bill, considers that that 80% bill is the first step. We'll see what they end up doing with the ratios. I do hear concerns about the cost of that, over $100 million over the next three years. But that is something that is very much in their radar. There are several other pieces of school safety legislation, one requiring schools to enter into MOUs with local law enforcement regarding the use of school resource officers, still providing additional safety training to school staff, review of school construction by prime prevention specialists, and an expansion of how school security grants may be used for investments, other investments like alert system apps and other new technologies. There are a number of other legislative proposals we're following, and we will provide more details on all those in the community update that Shadé referenced. As far as what we're asking from you, we continue to ask for your engagement in the legislative process. We are trying to provide opportunities on a daily basis, and we really appreciate your support. We encourage you to communicate regularly with members of the Richmond delegation and any other members that you know in the General Assembly about what our funding priorities are. And I know that they all appreciate your input in the legislative process. Many legislators were formerly school board members themselves, and they take your opinions very seriously. Please also ask your constituents to be engaged. We really encourage letters, phone calls, in-person visits, all of the above. I'm happy to provide any support that you need to help convey that message to them. And then if you do plan to come down to the Assembly, please let me know what your plans are, and I'm happy to provide any support to you as well, or to help you with the day scheduled, talking points on issues that are close and dear to your heart, and any other information that you need. So thank you for your time, and we look forward to tuning in to RPS and the board during the session.
Thank you, Matthew. I just wanted to thank Matthew for all of his hard work and the entire Office of Engagement Team, who have been busy to help track everything, as well as communicate with you. We hope all of it is helpful. Thank you. Any questions?
Yes.
Ms. Crosby? Thank you. I want you to react to that, and this comment. The survey, so percentage of...
70% of Virginians said that they feel that current public education funding is not adequate. 63% of Virginians would be willing to pay higher taxes to fund increases.
Okay, now, what were the surveys?
From the Commonwealth Education Poll conducted by the D.C. Center for Public Policy.
Can we add an update for this? Yes, and open. Thank you.
Ms. Bur? I must say, I had the opportunity to attend one of Matthew's workshops. And when I first walked into the room, I'm thinking, I want to see 50, 60 people. But there were less than 20. But we have to be mindful whether it was just two folk. It was so effective, and everybody was so engaged. And it was beyond parents. There were people that worked not for which in public schools, but had been extended just to interest in the school system. But I must honor something, a few things and then some. But I hope as we continue this process, that when General Assembly is done, we just won't let it rest. But it was well done. Well organized. I was very proud. The persons were very much engaged. So thank you so very much. Well done. Well done. We're going to get it in the end from somewhere. We have to.
I just want to thank Shadé and Matthew for their work. And I was a little bit joking, but really, I just get these texts, like, we need to have the Assembly this time, here are the talking points. It has made it very, very helpful. So please take them up on this. You can carve out some time. It only takes a few people to show up at these hearings to really make our voices heard. And even though we may not always be successful, I really do believe that it matters. I also just want to thank publicly delegate Born and Senator McCollum for inviting me to be a participant in their process of advocacy for their bills, and looking forward to continuing to do that for them and the rest of the Richmond delegation. So carve out any time you can to walk across the street.
And Ms. Crosby?
Oh, yes. Yes, absolutely. Absolutely. Yes, absolutely.
Bur? Was that the Gads?...
Yes.
The Gads count. This was the first that was set up.
That's okay.
And someone sent us an email about it.
Yes. And they've all been active in all kinds of ways, behind the scenes and in front as well.
So at this time, oh, thank you. Thank you. But this time is for...
Alfiyol?
Thank you so much.
Just know we're available every evening.
Thank you. Thank you. Let's dial. The next guy is like 6 for business, 6.01. I think our new process was required school board training. So board members, trying to streamline the process for requiring school board training. And Ms. Lewis, I'm sorry, and Ms. Nelson, will give us an update on that. Because no training has been one item that can consume a lot, a lot of time if board needs, so try to streamline this process of requiring school board training.
So board members, within the next few weeks, you will be receiving a schedule and instructions on having certain access to documents with required training, such as your four-year training in your comprehensive interest. And it will be your responsibility to review those documents and confirm that you have completed the training and dates, or deadline dates to complete that training will be included in the information you receive.
That's all.
So this is going to be online training? We're going to have online training?
We're still, we're still trying to work this out for you.
Okay, thank you.
The next item is 6.02, discuss upcoming school board governance training.
So board members, our next governance training will be held on March 16th, as we all know. So the purpose of that training, that will be an opportunity for us to discuss items that we have, that has been presented before the board to improve school board efforts on the meetings and for the board to operate in a more effective and efficient manner. So from the last meeting, board members were supposed to provide feedback by your letters, and we got feedback from Ms. Young, thank you. Ms. Gibson, thank you, and myself. So again, school board training, governance training is an opportunity to further discuss the items or additional items at that time. Ms. Dor?
So I think we'd like to hear from you all about our upcoming training. Take very seriously school board governance and transparency. Also, Ms. Page and I wanted to react quickly to some of the ideas that we've been talking about for a while. So moving forward, do you want to talk about the live streaming?
Yes. So I know the administration is currently working on live streaming, so hopefully that will be up and running soon, because what better way, public to be involved, and what better way for us to tell our story?
So we don't have to have Ms. Treadway come to the meeting as a volunteer and live stream our meetings. So that's one item. And then second item that we felt like we can quickly respond to, Mrs. Foia. Moving forward, Mrs. Wilson will be attaching costs related to her FOIA request. Our opinion that there's a lot of things that we need to talk about as a board as it relates to governance, so a good place to do that would be the board governance training, but open to...
So more information will be coming, so that we can have effective and efficient governance training on the 16th of March. Ms. Young?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate that. I proposed for that meeting on the 16th, and we create an ad hoc committee in the interim between now and then, group of persons representative of the group as a whole, that could deliberate as it relates to some of those different things that are submitted. And perhaps those, I suspect likely some of my colleagues have some other ideas that maybe they have an opportunity to submit by the time, but a group that could deliberate on these different proposals and then make a presentation, have that meeting on March 16th in effort to perhaps make the time to show it to you. So in short, the motion would be that we create an ad hoc committee for the purpose of reviewing any good governance ideas to be reviewed at that meeting on our March 16th.
So Ms. Young is writing this motion?
Just to do a little song and dance, you know, while he's writing that down, I would want you to also note, Ms. Page, with the FOIA request, if we could also include the date that the FOIA was submitted to, to request or file that report as well.
Ms. Young made a motion to create an ad hoc committee to deliberate on good governance ideas to review a March 16th meeting, and I second it from Ms. Gibson.
Any discussion? So my question, the timeline for this ad hoc committee to end, is there an end time?
Yeah, I'm perfectly comfortable with sun setting at March 16th.
Madam Chair, I use the word sunset in particular, assuming that the level of the board is to continue it at that point, or perhaps we, at that March 16th, be able to done all of our work, but...
Ms. Bur? So when we go to Charlottesville on March 16th, the purpose there is, I thought, please clarify, is to get the information in terms of what's expected as a review for us and what else has been changed from the state of Virginia, State Department of Education, or whatever else. So when we think in terms of board governance, that comes in the umbrella at the top, which we have to follow. Is that correct?
So just to give you some clarity, so the purpose of the board governance is opportunity for the board to set our goals, and which our goals have been set by our strategic plan, our MOU. So things, just to give you an example, so things we may want to do, we need to keep in mind, those items need to be aligned with the strategic plan as well as the MOU, because that is our responsibility and according to VVOE, it's a requirement. And, you know, there may be other issues that come up.
All right, so, so. I just want to make sure we're clear. I didn't know that there was a problem here on the group of board members. So what I'm hearing now that it is, and if it is, I just, no, if that's what the board says collectively, then I have to follow through. But I'm just trying to figure out, so this is a new process or is this a new, because we're talking about from another, another committee. This is a process like an oversee oversight committee to make sure we are on board and aligned correctly or?
So the ad hoc committee, the purpose of the ad hoc committee is to deliberate on good governance ideas to review at the board governance meeting on March 16th.
So this could, so this committee will get the feedback from us that's already been submitted by some of the board members. And they will decide what is to be submitted on March 16th.
It's part of one of the proportions on that day, agenda items on that day. And we'll be working with Virginia School Board Association as well. And we'll be working on the agenda. Does it follow them, Ms. Dor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, um, for one, think it's important for us as a board to, uh, to take some time to, uh, look at how we operate. See if there are any changes that we can make. This is something that we've done in the past. Uh, to the extent that people want to get together beforehand and put together some suggestions for the board review, I think, um, I'm certainly open to it. Because I'm, I'm sure that there are, uh, you know, with a collective group getting together to, um, sort of lay out some of these ideas beforehand, uh, we may be in an even better position to optimize how our board runs. So I'll support it.
Ms. Dor and Ms. Gibson?
I think also for clarity, um, we'll be submitting an agenda, a suggested agenda. We can figure out how to incorporate and make sure that we're addressing our needs with the BSVA, our MOU requirements, and then any additional ideas from board members about how we can better function as a board.
Ms. Gibson?
Um, yes, Madam Chair. I, I just wanted to note, like, as an example, I've attended two of our governance trainings so far. Um, and observed that often the things that we put on the agenda are, are big things that we really want to chew into. Um, I remember, I recall a conversation that we had regarding our board norms. Um, there was also a discussion that we had on, on goals. And, um, because of the limited amount of time, we haven't really been able to, to get closure on those things. We haven't made changes to our board norms, for instance, for example. So, um, so I think, you know, to my colleague that was kind of wondering, uh, you know, what the goal would be. I think it would be what, how can we put something together to allow us to, to get some traction? Um, and I'd define, you know, beginning and having something leading into that meeting or using that meeting as a launch point and then regrouping after that, um, you know, whatever the, the goal would be.
And so board members, just be reminded, reminded that the governance training is a responsibility. It's required by VDOE. So is it something that we have to do? But not necessarily, I don't want to say what we have to do. But Virginia School Board Association is our governing body as far as professional development, how to operate more effectively and efficiently as board members. Because our role, board members, we set policies, we have oversight. But just make sure that we are clear on our roles as board members. So again, this is a requirement on VDOE. And we have to have 100% participation. And so as we're going forward, Ms. Dor and I will have a set agenda that we would have, would like inputs from board members as we prepare, prepare the agenda for March 16th. And incorporate items from the ad hoc committee as well.
Next item. So motions made by Mr. Young, seconded by Ms. Gibson, to create an ad hoc committee to deliberate on good governance ideas to review at March 16th, uh, meeting. Ms. Mr. Baller?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Ms. Berg?
No.
Ms. Owen?
No.
Ms. Saffini?
Yes.
Ms. Dor?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Motion passed, it's settled to.
So I'll be reaching out to board members as far as participation on ad hoc committee.
The next item. The next item is item seven, administration business, seven point zero one, receive a high school transcript update.
Good evening, board members. I wanted to provide you an update since our last, this is, yeah. An update since our last meeting a couple of weeks ago, we continue to make progress. Just hold on to the first slide. Uh, so as of last, uh, Friday, the VDOE completed part one of this initial review. And, um, in terms of credits being removed based on the local electives and the approval that you all made a couple of weeks ago, those have all been corrected. Uh, our trans, our new transcript template is populating correctly. I had a meeting with parents of Franklin Military this afternoon and, um, they all, uh, they were able to look at a preview of their student's transcripts and, um, were pleased with what it looked like. So I'm happy to report that the process is on target. The DOE team will continue their work next week to ensure that items that were outlined in reports, such as course codes and course titles match exactly correct, um, in which we consider to be important. But a second tier correction after the credits were corrected as well as the, which will inform the GPA and the assumptions around GPA and verified credits, et cetera. So we are on track to complete all of this work for seniors by February 1st. And work for juniors, sophomore, and freshman will begin quickly thereafter. And we believe that we are on track, based on what we know today, that this work will be completed and have met all the requirements that the VDOE outlined no later than April 1st. It's been, um, again, very, very intensive. And the counselors and schools have done a great job flexing, as has, as have our partners at the VDOE, to make sure we can get this done despite weather delays and other such things. An additional update is, um, to, as we continue to dig in, a few additional courses came to our attention that do require approval. And you remember last, at our last board meeting, we did open up the opportunity for folks to submit any additional documentation. And so we did receive, um, documentation for a couple of those courses. So when we move to action tonight, I do have, um, a couple of action items related to retroactive course approval. Um, and we anticipate this to be the final ask related to this. Um, for 1819, there are three courses currently being offered that were not caught in the original list. 20th Century History, there are two versions, 20th Century History and 20th Century History slash Modern and Contemporary. These are the same courses that are just referred to two different ways. So we have to approve it in this manner. High School Developmental Reading is a course that students who are struggling with reading in high school, particularly students who might have an IEP take and that is a local elective. And then Scientific Research and Design is a local course that is exactly as it sounds. Students really dig into the scientific process and work on writing scientific papers. So those will be for 1819. And then additional documentation retroactively, um, the, again, the 20th Century History, Modern and Contemporary to be approved for last school year and sociology to be approved for 1718. So those additional documents, they come forward after our last board meeting. And so we're bringing those to you today for approval. But we're not at action yet. So that's just the update. Um, so what, any questions or comments about the update?
Ms. Allison?
Uh, thank you. It's not only here, however, during our last board meeting, um, you identified approximately 40 courses that would not be submitted for approval. And, um, the question was asked at the time, do you know the impact and how many students were impacted? Do you have any, are we close to?
We are very close to having that. Um, we will have that through at the next board meeting, at least for seniors. And then as we go through the process, we can certainly update you each month. Um, the DOE is doing a final check this week. And so, and then we have a tracker that we'll be running to send, we'll be using that same information to send individualized letters home so that each family knows how they were impacted. And I'll be able to present that to you at the next meeting.
So just to summarize, because I, I just want the board to fully observe this. So, uh, nearly all of the credit issues have now been resolved. So I, I just want the board to pause and reflect. This was thousands upon thousands of hours, um, from the RPS team and the DOE team going through transcript by transcript for every single senior, um, not once, but twice.
It's probably four or five times.
Four or five times at this point. There are still other issues to be cleaned up in terms of nomenclature and whatnot. But in terms of having the right credits, having the right GPA and the right cost rank, we will be in position to do that for the first semester of board parents. So I wanted to just recognize, uh, Tracy and her team and Harry and his team, who's been a big part of this and the rest, um, all the support from Darren and his team on the technology side and Michelle. Everybody has been a part of this. And our partners at the VDOE, including, um, their team of how many people?
At least 12.
At least 12 who have assisted us with this. Um, and I do want to give a shout out, um, to Beth Rabel, our, our key contact there, um, for helping us through this, this very difficult and challenging period, which we are hopefully coming to resolution on very soon.
Ms. Young?
Yeah, well, so I'd really commend you and your team and everybody in our case for doing this. And, um, it's really, really good to have this behind us. But my question regards something you, you've addressed in preceding meetings. But, um, can you just speak to just real briefly what we're doing to ensure it doesn't happen again? Because, and you please correct me if, if I'm mistaken, but largely, I mean, I think it's fair to say, is it fair to say largely a lot of human, a lot of human errors, right? So I mean, so what are we doing to address this so that five years from now, persons won't be having the same kind of conversation?
Sure, great question. So, um, the main thing that we're doing is developing standard operating procedures and timelines and clear roles and responsibilities in terms of which teams, which positions, not individual people's names, but which teams and positions are responsible for what as we prepare for any given school year. And so, for example, while the curriculum instruction team is responsible for recommending the courses that ultimately make it into the program of studies and ensuring the curriculum is developed, there's a different set of folks who have to do the back, background work in Aspen in terms of verifying state codes, um, what we call course attributes that live in the system that tell us which courses are leveled um, for an honors weight or an advanced placement weight, et cetera. And so really outlining whose job it is to do X, Y, and Z. Um, particularly at the central office level is the biggest part. Um, uh, and we think by starting essentially from, so similar to a comment that was made earlier about the budget, typically courses have just kind of been rolled over year to year. And then therefore, if something was wrong one year, it just continues to be rolled over and then courses get added. And so the courses that are listed in our Aspen system that are available to be scheduled is a very long list of courses, some of which have been outdated. Now, if you're a counselor making scheduling decisions, you may not know that and you might think that that course is available to be scheduled regardless of what the program of study says. So those two things haven't always matched. Um, so those two things matching and with the chief academic officer being the ultimate approver of both will ensure that there's a single source of updated courses in Aspen every year. And that's not something we just roll over year to year, but we really, really check and build it from, um, the ground up from this year forward. Um, but it of course requires review processes. So we are putting time into building that out. I think the second, the second area is really around training at the school level so that counselors and principals can spot when things look off. So a counselor shouldn't have to worry about the right state course code. If it's in our program of studies, the counselor should be confident that what's in the program of studies is correct. But of course, we all are, you know, we all are human. And so when there is human error, we want someone to notice it and have the background and knowledge to raise the hand and say, hey, this doesn't quite look right. So we've also asked through this process, we've been building the capacity of counselors to do that. Um, and then third is a, um, a codified training plan of what needs to be learned and known at each, um, role at the high school and middle school level in a lot of cases in terms of what must counselors know about courses and credits? What must department chairs or, or, or lead teachers know about these things? And what must principals also be on the hook for and be knowledgeable of? So that that knowledge doesn't just reside with any one person, um, particularly given school systems which are susceptible to transitions. So that's a bit of a three-part process.
Ms. Young?
Just real briefly, and this is getting a little lewd, so in respect of your colleagues, not everyone, but, but it, it does go to philosophical concerns. And if a counselor, for example, at Huguenot High School were to identify that student X had a problem with their transcript that may have been worn out of, uh, maybe something that was done at Lucille Brown or some. Point is, something materialized somewhere before student X got to Counselor Brown. What's, is there a process, so maybe it's just informal now, but who would that counselor go to say, just fix this?
Yeah, um, so that is not, bless you, there is, um, I don't think it's an overstatement to say that there is, there is no documentation of procedures and processes related to this and related to many things. So right now, um, it could be they, a counselor may overlook it. A counselor may pick up the phone and call the counselor at Lucille Brown if that counselor happened to be there. They may come to our counseling specialist at the division level. They might do any number of things. So how we handle questions about in district transfers, including how we handle questions about out of district transfers are not codified. So our, um, our staff does have a responsibility this year, essentially my team, to develop, be developing these standard operating procedures for things just like that. Um, I'll give you another example that's more based on a knowledge question. Um, so that's one of a process. Um, but also if you don't know, keep asking until you find the answer. And so we are working to change that culture. So if you're not sure, keep asking until someone gives you something to go with. Secondly, but not to let it slide. And I think that was probably what was the most egregious about this is even when there were questions, and frankly, I had a counselor tell me last week that she did raise this to, um, uh, people in the past and nothing was done about it. And so to keep, to not, you know, just sort of accept that, but to keep pushing if you think students are at risk. Um, on the other hand, there are things that we should know and have systems that, that flag. So for example, um, to meet certain graduation requirements, you have to have what's called a sequential elective in high school if you're getting a standard diploma. And that means that the CTE sequence, and they have to follow a sequence. And that means that the CTE sequence, and they have to follow a sequence that makes sense, a pathway, if you will. Well, not all, some of our students who might be not on track to graduate are not on track to graduate because they haven't met that sequence, not because they're losing their credit. So we have come across students that are not on track to graduate, but not because of this, but because of a flaw in scheduling at the beginning of the year. Now, our counselors have 300 students on their roster, plus a bunch of other responsibilities. So we should have a system that allows us to identify precisely through a report exactly what a student needs to ensure that they graduate, and we should be able to run that at equipment level. And so we're working on building out such report to give our counselors more information faster, so they're not having to go through paper, paper spreadsheets, and hand-by-hand tracking.
Any other questions?
Dr. Young, again, I would just like to thank you and your team, and everyone that has supported with this effort, and trust in this issue for our students. Can't thank you enough. Enough. I know this has been a daunting task, and hopefully it's made on light at the end of the tunnel. Again, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for the support. Thank you. I may have the next item, so we'll see.
The next item is out of A Board Actions, eight point zero one, receive for action policy five dash six point three, GPA and class rates.
Okay. At our last board meeting, we presented for first read, a clarification of our existing policy that was updated in August, also to reflect, to provide clarity around weights and class ratings. What we sought to clarify was the date by which this policy would become, would go into effect. And so the primary clarification is around the effective date, and we want this policy to be effective beginning with courses taken in the 2018-19 school year, and to remain in effect until such policy is updated. We also clarified, if you remember last time, that IB courses for the middle years, and made that distinction between the middle years and the diploma years program, again, consistent with practice and with the program of studies, but erring on the side of being explicit. And I think to address the comments that were raised during public comment, the question about pupils transferring during junior year and senior year, being, whether they should receive a GPA and standing as a percentage rather than being included in class rank, I think we could clarify that language to say, we will, we need to look at, I think this is really meant to say after the junior year has begun, because on the back of the policy, it says to be eligible for alabatorian and soliditorian, a pupil must complete the last four consecutive semesters prior to graduation. So that would imply junior semester one, junior year semester two, senior semester one, senior semester two. So I don't think it's conflicting, I just think the first part of the paragraph should say, once the school year has begun, or something to that effect, that we should determine how far into a junior year you are no longer eligible for that. And again, we could make that additional edit, or that could be dealt with in future, we could revisit that question in future policy revisions. So let me pause, those are the changes we put forward, as well as my response to the public comment question.
Ms. Carlson?
So this is a for action now. All right, but if we're going to make those changes, that clarification, we can hold off on? What? Any questions?
My understanding is that the desire of administration is to move forward with the clarification with respect to the effective date, so that affects the transfer running and all of that. We can come back to clarify the, that statement for the question that was raised.
Okay, so you have to get the date straight, so.
And the changes that were brought forth in the second reading, first reading, but you can.
Can we just be clear in terms of our action, what we are acting on, not what the council.
To be clear, you're acting on the second reading of the policy, right, as presented, the changes that are highlighted and track changes, with the exception, the first part as shown here would say, the following policy is effective beginning with courses taken within the 2018-19 school year. Those would be the, and then the other, I don't know if I can scroll down, but the other changes that are shown in blue, or whatever color your track changes shows. This is to just clarify, pass fail, using consistent language. And then the only other change was this honor slash IB middle years program, to make the distinction from the diploma program from last time. Those are the, and then we make, we made this note here.
All right, we can forget the work, the policies, I just want to be, because they didn't help figure out the little time they had, that they need this to go forward. Ms. Gibson?
Oh, the question was about further clarifications to the policy, and I would suggest that board members move forward with taking action on this particular policy in response to the request of the administration tonight. We can, as we always do each year, bring forward this policy to clarify the statement in response to the question that was raised to the, during the public information, as we bring forward our policies each year for adjustment. At a later time. Each year we will get policies, okay? So this can be one of the policies that we bring forward, once we verify the precise language that we want to use for the clarification. I don't think that you want, we want to get into a discussion right now about what that is, but it will come back before you, as a first read and a second read, with that clarification only.
Ms. Gibson is.
I think that one hesitation is just that it's hard to keep track of these things when, you know, there's things that we want to revisit. I'm going back to the early discussion that we had regarding the governance, but one observation that I've made is that other boards have a section in their agenda that is for unfinished business, and this would be an example of a good item that could then roll into the next meeting with whatever that amendment was, so that we could re-vote, you know, vote on it again. I think that's just something to consider in terms of how we work as a standard, you know, kind of right of the school board, has that section. So, and I mean, I'm prepared to vote for this tonight as is, but it is hard to keep track of all of these things that we say, oh yeah, let's do that later, and it stands to protect that. I would also want the record to state that with this particular item, I would like to review it later, because I have, I do have concerns, as I mentioned in our last meeting, as it pertains to the equity of putting such a high weight on those classes that are AP classes or IB classes, when there is not equality within the district in terms of access of those classes. And to me, that is a, that's a really big deal, particularly at the board, if we have made such a commitment to equity. I think that, this is a very key example of living to that value.
Ms. Johnson?
Well, I move that we approve this policy five dash six point three as presented.
So it's moved, it's been moved by Ms. Holmes, and seconded by Ms. Burke, to approve the policy five dash six point three. Any discussion? Ms. Carlson?
Thank you. I would just ask that we review this sooner rather than later, and not necessarily wait for our board, that's all. Because if we have a constituent, a parent, or whoever saying, hey, this is confusing, so we need to address it, and make it so that it's not as confusing, and be very clear, especially when we're talking about classroom, because we went through this last year, and so, and we have to be very clear. So if we can set a time to revisit it, to add the clarifying language to it, that would be good.
And also, board members, be reminded that legal, for parents, is scheduled for the policy review, and that is our way of keeping track of policy review, revisions, and policies that we have to go back over, and how we need track, or to ensure that policy, what we have approved, implementation has been followed through throughout the division, and is a way for us to keep track of that.
I'd be happy to bring, continue to, continue bringing another version after this one is approved, and also happy to have a broader input conversation around rank and those things. I would welcome those, and you all tell me the timeframe if you'd like, and how you'd like to be engaged, and I'm happy to do that.
All the questions?
Here in motion is made by Ms. Holmes, seconded by Ms. Burke, to approve policy five dash six point three. Ms. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson? Yes. Ms. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Carlson? Yes. Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Dr. Sapien?
Yes.
Ms. Lu?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Motion passes eight, one. And for the next motion, it is to approve the following courses for the 2017-19 school year, sociology and 20th century history, modern and contemporary, high school developmental reading, one through four, and scientific research and design. Any discussion? All the questions? Ms. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Abstain.
Ms. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Dr. Sapien?
Yes.
Ms. Lu?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Motion passes eight, one.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is to receive for action personnel actions.
Good evening, Madam Chair, good evening, school board members. The recommended human resource department actions for the school board meeting scheduled for Tuesday, January 22, 2019, include the nomination of 11 employees, the change of contract of 17 employees, the transfers of 11 employees, the resignations of 13 employees, the furlough of eight employees, the returning from leave of 11 employees, the rescission of one employee, the termination of two employees, and the name change of one employee.
Do you have a question?
Thank you.
Need a motion to approve HR action?
So moved.
Second. So it's been moved by Ms. Barlow, and seconded by Ms. Owens, to approve HR action as presented. Any discussion? All the questions?
Ms. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Abstain.
Ms. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Dr. Sapien?
Yes.
Ms. Lu?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Motion passes eight, one.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is to receive for action personnel actions.
Good evening, Madam Chair, good evening, school board members. The recommended human resource department actions for the school board meeting scheduled for Tuesday, January 22, 2019, include the nomination of 11 employees, the change of contract of 17 employees, the transfers of 11 employees, the resignations of 13 employees, the furlough of eight employees, the returning from leave of 11 employees, the rescission of one employee, the termination of two employees, and the name change of one employee.
Do you have a question?
Thank you.
Need a motion to approve HR action?
So moved.
Second. So it's been moved by Ms. Barlow, and seconded by Ms. Owens, to approve HR action as presented. Any discussion? All the questions?
Ms. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Abstain.
Ms. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Dr. Sapien?
Yes.
Ms. Lu?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Motion passes eight, one.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is to receive for action personnel actions.
Good evening, Madam Chair, good evening, school board members. The recommended human resource department actions for the school board meeting scheduled for Tuesday, January 22, 2019, include the nomination of 11 employees, the change of contract of 17 employees, the transfers of 11 employees, the resignations of 13 employees, the furlough of eight employees, the returning from leave of 11 employees, the rescission of one employee, the termination of two employees, and the name change of one employee.
Do you have a question?
Thank you.
Need a motion to approve HR action?
So moved.
Second. So it's been moved by Ms. Barlow, and seconded by Ms. Owens, to approve HR action as presented. Any discussion? All the questions?
Ms. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Abstain.
Ms. Young?
Abstain.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Dr. Sapien?
Yes.
Ms. Lu?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Motion passes seven, two. The next item is the consent agenda, we do have several items under the consent agenda for pool. One is to receive school or travel to district activities. Mrs. Burke has submitted a request for $260 for Mount Shanghai, and for the principal
It's been moved by Ms. Barlow and seconded by Ms. Dool to approve consent agenda. Any discussion? Ms. Gibson?
I had also put in a request for using the discretionary fund.
You did. Can I send you back your activity? Did you send it back to me?
Okay.
It's not, she did. And what was your, what were you having? It was for about?
It was, I can look it up, but it was for.
For the Burke District Schools?
To attend a upcoming conference that would basically allow each school to send up to three staff persons to an upcoming conference to get training on supporting students with behavior challenges. And there's a lot that has to do with, you know, supporting kids with autism. And so I believe the cost, I don't think you could call off, it might have been 4,800 as a maximum, depending on, you know, how many folks and how many days the various schools attended, but they were very excited about it.
So with that addition, we are adding Ms. Gibson's request to the district activity.
Call the question?
The motion against made by Mr. Barlow, seconded by Ms. Dool. Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Abstain.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Elwin?
Yes.
Dr. Sapien?
Yes.
Ms. Dool?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Motion passes eight one. The next, the next item is new business?
So board members, at this time, we're in the process of forming our committee representatives or appointing our committee representatives. So what I have, what I'm doing is sending the list around and you'll see the committee names and the column, 2018 board members serving 2018. And then if you'd like to continue or not continue, fill out the 2019 board representative column. So these are board committees' responsibilities to serve. And once you finish, we're to submit it to our board.
The next item is our quote.
The question is such a tough, so.
Thank you. That's like tremendously helpful.
Does she have to make up time?
Yeah, I think you're safe. Yeah, it's just one of those, like, I can't believe it exists. Some always word I'm a loser.
I, I was just wondering what the timing is, making the information on if there's going to be adjustments to the calendar to accommodate more time loss and school learning. I asked it partially as a parent who has these calendar things, she tried to match.
Yes. I assure your concern as a parent. Over the next several weeks, we'll be making that determination. I think one of the things that we have going for us is that the governor should declare a state emergency on a number of those days. My understanding is, in that case, we're not required to make up the day. So we're digging into that a little bit more that I can bring back a plan for the board to consider. Oh, we can let go of waivers. Dr. Up, when do you think we'd be ready to bring that back to the board to look at more formally? There you go.
We didn't propose our section two point two dash three seven or nine and number two, which will turn out as you mentioned, I mean, this two board is going to, going to propose to discuss prospective candidates for employment and assignment, commercial points, and motion salaries, and regulations for the division, and the agenda of the state, and lots of other important areas, and, and to consider the additional disciplinary matters of any other research involved, containing the last record of the national public school students. Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Cosby and seconded by Ms. Burke. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Saying that we have none, we are now in votes.